All right. Good morning, everyone. Happy Friday. Budget study sessions continue. Nora, or I'm sorry, Nora, I was just talking to Nora. Tony, let's please take the role.
Jimenez.
President.
Torres. Cohen.
Here.
Cortez.
Present.
Davis. Doan.
Present.
Candela.
Present.
Foley.
Here.
Botra.
Present.
Mayhahn.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Tony. All right. So just as a reminder, we will have public comment at the end of this study session. We're going to kick off with transportation and aviation services. And I'm turning it over to Rob.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, members of the public. I'm Rob Lloyd, Deputy City Manager, here together with John Risto, our Director of Transportation, and Judy Ross, our Assistant Aviation Director. Let me go back one. So the San Jose is served by extraordinary teams in the transportation aviation service area. Our airport and transportation departments are recognized as among the best in the nation in their fields. They sustain safe, secure, efficient, and equitable transportation in support of our community life, economic vitality, and that is our CSA mission. There are also differentiators. Our San Jose-Manetta International Airport is a city enterprise, and their funding is supported by revenues they generate. Our Department of Transportation receives significant federal and state grants that you see in the budget, and that helps them with a portfolio of work. And both work very closely with our federal, state, and local partners to ensure services and investments produce key community outcomes while maximizing the use of non-city resources. Across the operating programs shown, our community has a history of excellence in transportation aviation, includes multiple honors for operational excellence, performance against national benchmarks, and just like to brag on airport as the number-one city-rated service in the city annual report. This is an important backdrop, as the departments also manage key initiatives and challenges post-pandemic, addressing transportation safety, air travel recovery, regional mass transit decisions, blight, and more. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Judy, who's going to go into the performance measures and then pass it on to John.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Judy Ross, Assistant Director of the Airport Department. We'll just touch on a couple of the measures that are before you, and I'd like to call your attention to the upper left, and this is our annual passengers. And as you can see, we were down quite a bit due to the pandemic. However, we've been steadily rising back to our 2019 levels, and before too long, we should achieve the 2019 levels. The next measure, right under it, is our overall satisfaction rating. It's the rating that we do receive from the Airport Service Quality Program from the Airport Council International, and those are based on quarterly surveys from our passengers. And as you can see, we have a pretty great rating for the overall satisfaction. Our concessions, particularly the restaurants and eating establishments, have a little bit lower, and that is due to several constructions, several of the concessions being under construction, and also some labor hiring challenges. And the last one is our share of the Bay Area service market. And of course, San Francisco is always the number-one, has the greatest share of the passengers. We're number-two in the Bay Area at seventeen-and-a-half percent. So our goal is to capture more of those passengers in the coming year and reach eighteen percent of the overall market share. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Risto for the transportation metrics.
Thank you, Judy. John Risto, Director of Transportation. If I could direct your attention to the top middle under traffic safety. Traffic and system safety is always our top priority, and although we have had the trend going in the wrong direction for the last couple of years, I think with the efforts of the Vision Zero Task Force and all the work being done by the multiple departments, Police Department, Department of Transportation, and others, I think we're going to try to turn that trend around. The percentage that you see right there, the estimate, is injuries per one thousand per capita. It is a goal. We're trying to meet that goal and actually reduce that as well. So this is our top priority. Everything we do is trying to make that work in the right direction. The next one I just want to highlight is the quality of roads, and this is going the right way. This is actually a very, very successful program that we were lucky enough with a lot of taxpayer and City Council Mayor's support to have enough funding to really turn around the quality and conditions of the city's roadway system. We're already at seventy-one, seventy-one as a pavement condition index. We started this a number of years ago, and it was about sixty-three. So it's definitely going in the right direction. I think when we complete our eight-year program of paving every road in the city, I think we'll even see it better than that. The other one, transportation mode shift, is a little tough to continue to measure with since the COVID really changed many of their commute patterns and mode shift patterns, but that's one that's, we're trying to make a major change in terms of how people get around the city, and I think we're making some positive progress on that as well. Judy?
Okay, thank you. On slide number five, has the overall budget summary for the airport and the Transportation Department. As you note, there is a nine percent increase in the overall budget from the current year to next year, and that increase is basically comprised of increases in contractual services, increases in overhead and interdepartment expenses, and our debt service payments. And also under, we are requesting five additional positions at the airport and to our, in facilities to assist with our heavy equipment, such as the jet bridges, the escalators, and elevators. And we have one person in our environmental department to addition, to add to the employees focusing on our sustainability management plan and implementing those initiatives. And one position in our technology division, and that is to replace the contract position to a city position to design and maintain and construct our network systems.
The transportation portion of the operating budget is pretty stable and static. What we're trying to do is actually continue the current service levels, but trying to make some positions that were temporary more permanent and add some key positions to support some of the areas such as grant procurement and evaluation and monitoring. But overall, budget's pretty stable and consistent.
Okay, I did talk about the additional staffing with facilities and environmental. The one I didn't talk about is subscribing to the Silicon Valley Regional Communication System, and that has to do with the radio system. And it's currently, we operate our own, and this would allow us to subscribe to a regional system for higher reliability and interoperability if an emergency event would take place.
And as I mentioned in the previous slide, our budget is primarily pretty static, just trying to keep current staffing levels. However, we are adding some resources to do some important things. This is a great time for us to be going after federal and state grants, so we're adding some resources there. And then, one of the most important things is we really want to evaluate the performance of a lot of the, of the measures that we are putting into the street system, both safety and other multimodal performance. So we're really going to ramp up our evaluation and monitoring system in terms of how well we're doing with regard to multimodal shift and safety.
As you all are well aware, we had initiated a new branding strategy at the turn of the year, and part of that branding strategy was the tagline "Fly Simple." And we want all of our customers coming to the airport to have a welcoming and stress-free experience, and we keep that as a very focused area with all our teams across the airport. We desire to have the high levels of customer service, and we were thrilled to be named the best airport in North America for a medium-sized airport from airport service quality through the American Airport Council of North America. We also keep a keen laser focus on air service and looking to enhance our air service offerings for the regional community. And as you are well aware, ZipAir began operations in December to Narita, and Spirit Airlines will start operations on June 7th to Las Vegas, Dallas-Fort Worth, and San Diego, and will continue to work to attract additional airlines and markets, serving different markets throughout the coming, well, throughout the coming year and beyond. And funding and our top priority is always to maintain a safe and secure environment for our passengers and the traveling public. And we work very closely with our national regulatory agencies and local law enforcement to do such.
And then for Department of Transportation, as I mentioned earlier, our highest priority is traffic safety, and we're very fortunate to have an active Vision Zero program and task force to help us to get there. With this budget, we hope to be able to continue our quick build of the Vision Zero corridors, the priority safety corridors throughout the city, and really complete many of those within this budget. We just launched, and many of you were involved in a press conference for our roadway safety campaign, appealing to drivers to slow down, thanking Councilmember Dwan, the Mayor, and Task Force Chair Pam Foley for that. I think it's already been successful. The other, one of the other really big programs that's important to us is expansion of our regional system, and we've got some very big projects either underway now or shortly to be, both on the highway side, large roadway projects to make them safer, and a BART project that's going to start in the next year. So we've got a lot of big projects that are coming onboard and online with, for the city, and I think they will be really city-changing projects over the long term. Although the current backlog, the one-time always looks like it's insurmountable, I think with the pavement program and the success we've had with funding a large portion, we chip away at this every year. This is a snapshot, but it still gets better, even though the backlog looks large. So I think overall, we're in pretty good shape with that. We do have some future needs in terms of continuing that program of maintenance, but right now, that looks pretty good, actually.
Okay, just to summarize, as I mentioned before, we keep a laser focus on growing our service market area and our offerings to the regional community. And we'll continue to provide exceptional and outstanding customer service. When you're number-one, it's even more difficult because more is expected of you to stay number-one. It's important to us to be mindful as we work with our airlines and tenants to have competitive rates and a kind of competitive cost per plane passenger, and we're in a competitive market with two other airports in the region, so we must remain competitive in the region. We also focus on ensuring we are good environmental stewards and are progressing through our sustainability management plan and our net-zero carbon accreditation. And part of that, last year, we did join the San Jose Clean Energy Tola Green Program, and so for all city airport buildings at the airport, we are 100% green energy. And last, not last, but not least, is that we do watch how our passenger trends are. And so when the operational need is and the financial metrics are met, we'll proceed with a new terminal project. But in the meantime, we are working through those facilities and relocating those facilities that are in the footprint for the terminal expansion. So you'll have seen some of those, and you'll continue to see some of those projects, so when the time is right, we can pursue the terminal expansion project.
Just to summarize for Department of Transportation, really our three top things are operate our system safely and build a multimodal, well-maintained system, and then support economic development. Thank you.
With that, staff's here to answer any questions that you have.
Right. Thank you. Start with Councilmember Foley.
Great, thank you. Thank you for your presentations on the airport and our transportation system. I appreciate both. I'm going to focus, Judy, on transportation, because others may focus on the airport. I want to first start off by thanking the really hard-working Department of Transportation. We really have a world-class team. They work really hard and effectively and efficiently to try to make our streets safe and do the best that we can, and work with Vision Zero and, and trying to implement the things we need to, to make our streets safe. So I'm truly grateful for all the Department of Transportation is doing. As the Chair of the Vision Zero Task Force, safety, street safety, safety is extremely important to me. I think it's important to all of us, but I feel a special burden because I am the Chair of that task force. Special burden and passion, let's put it that way. The budget adds new staffing, which I am grateful that the new staffing is being added to improve our grant writing or to monitor our grant writing, to implement projects. John, we heard from you a couple of months ago that you had the money you needed for the capital improvements, but that you couldn't deliver the project yet. So hopefully with the staffing, that will come in, into place. So I want to thank the Mayor for including that in his budget message, and also the City Manager for including it in hers. I also want to encourage, we just unrolled an education campaign, Slow Down San Jose. You're probably seeing the very powerful imagery on the billboards and the signs that have been posted, every, so to encourage everyone to slow down in San Jose. So if you need any of those posters, let us know, we can get those to you. John, I have some questions for you. On the, the budget in particular, in relation to the number of crashes per thousand population, is that all crashes being reported, not just fatalities or serious injuries?
I believe that's all crashes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It might be helpful. I know Vision Zero is really focused on the fatalities. To have that information for council as well, I know we talk about sixty-five being last year and being the high-water mark, and we just cannot have sixty-five again this year. And we're doing what we can, but it might be helpful to have that reference somewhere. So the two, or the staffing that we're adding, one we're adding, one is we're making permanent. Is it the goal of those staff members to, one, monitor and obtain grants, and the other, to deliver projects?
Yes. So the ones that were mentioned there are helping us to acquire the grants, which we've been pretty successful with, but right now, it's not a permanent position. We want to make it permanent.
Great.
That position also is going to help us with the before and after evaluations of not just safety projects, but multimodal as well. You know, so we've got a lot of different changes going into the system with bike lanes, et cetera, and we want to make sure that they're effective, so that those people are going to help do both of those.
Great. So then my next question is regarding the permanent transportation specialist who's monitoring, writing grants and, and analyzing the data or helping to analyze the data, is that enough? Do you have enough staff within your current department to handle all of those areas?
The, the grants is a pretty big job because there's so many opportunities out there. What we want to do is continue to really be aggressive, but build a program that that one person doesn't do all the evaluation. They, they create the framework for all of the engineers, planners, and other folks to be able to analyze before and after, so that we have a consistent way of doing it. So that one person's not going to evaluate every project, they're going to set, help us to set that up so that it's done across the department. So the answer, I think, is we're going to see how it goes and see what, if we need to have additional staff.
Okay, and will you be, as you, as you look forward, as you hire those people, implement their job descriptions, will you be analyzing whether, you already mentioned whether you need more staffing, but is there potentially, but is there a realignment that might be able to occur within the current number of staff positions you have?
Possibly, yeah. I think that's, you know, what we're doing is trying to get that, we've already started doing evaluation, as you've seen some of the evaluations coming through the Vision Zero Task Force, but we still need all the other projects that we're putting out in the field to be also an evaluation before and after. So the answer to your question is, yeah, we're going to keep looking at it to see if we have enough staff to keep up with that, and when we find something that needs to change, then how fast we can make those changes.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that, and, and I see my time is up, but I just want to make one final comment about the street safety improvements that we made, the quick builds and all of that. And, and for those residents who live in my district that I've had two of these occur on Blossom Hill and, or on Hillsdale and Branham, they're there to stay, drive safely, slow down, and then we'll analyze the data in a year and see how it works. So with that, I yield no time.
And Councilmember, if I could just add, Jim Shannon, City's Budget Director, on the, your question on the fatalities, although we don't show it in the way that the dashboard has it, in the Department, in the Transportation Department, Corps of Service, Transportation Safety and Operations, we've got on page 777, we do have the number of pedestrian and bike fatalities broke out for children and seniors, as well as the overall number of traffic fatalities, as well as pedestrian. So we break out sort of that data in a pretty detailed way in the department section.
Great, thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Dwan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for putting together the report, and thank you for supporting the Vision Zero. I just have a pretty quick question. I, I know that Vision Zero, we, we've done billboard advertisement, and we're looking to, I think, radio and television advertisement would be possibly, and social media would be the next step. Are we pushing that?
Thank you, Councilmember. The campaign that was just launched does include billboards and a lot of physical signs, both on buses and yard signs. It will include radio advertising and some social media, but our budget didn't allow us to get into TV advertising at this stage.
And with the radio advertisement, is it in multilingual?
Yes, it'll be English, Vietnamese, and Spanish.
Perfect, thank you very much. Thank you for the great work.
Next, Councilmember, Councilmember Torres.
Good afternoon, thank you for, for your presentation this morning. My questions are going to be directed to the airport, so Judy, just get ready, and I just want to give comments on Vision Zero. We, we all know that Vision Zero is extremely important, and sixty-plus pedestrian deaths is just too many for our city. One is too many, obviously, but sixty percent is just, is atrocious, and so I'm so glad that our city has been stepping up and making sure that Vision Zero becomes a reality. And thank you to our Department of Transportation for stepping up in recent years with the, all the other funding that's been coming in and making sure that we have safe neighborhoods and schools where kids could attend without fear of being hit by cars. So thank you for that. Judy, I have a couple of questions before my time is up, because this time goes super fast. So I've been, I've been asked by a few leaders in the Portuguese community on why, why we do not have a direct flight to Portugal. I know that we did before, and I'm not sure if it's come back. I know that there's a flight to Boston and then to Portugal, but then there's no direct flight. And I think it was only offered in the summer, that's what they were telling me.
Councilmember Torres, I don't recall a direct flight to Portugal, not to say it didn't happen in the past.
I think it was only in the summer.
Okay, we can do some research on that. However, we do have an active air service team that goes out to the market and works with the different business associations to capture data of where people want to go. And what I can do is I can share the information with that team and see just what the market is available and who is out there to serve it. He does, the, the lead in that area, the manager, does attend various air service, industry air service meetings and has individual meetings with several airlines. So I'll just work with him and see if there's something that he can generate and get an idea through different research on what that market is for the passenger counts both there and back.
Great, no, thank you. And I, and I do know they have told me that they either have to go to SFO or Oakland, which I don't know where those cities are. I'm just kidding. But they have to go to San Francisco, Oakland, to go to, you know, to go back, to go to Portugal, and we would love our Portuguese community to obviously, you know, come to our airport, to go home and come back, right, to visit family. So I know, you know, personally, my, my first cousin, she married into the, you know, Portuguese community, and when she has to come here and visit family, we have to go pick her up in SFO or Oakland because there's no direct, there's no direct flight. And with that, how does our airport market San Jose for new carriers to come to the airport?
Very similar to what I described for the Portuguese flights. We do have a marketing campaign. We have different air service and, lack of better terms, incentives in which we can offer that have been approved by, the program's been approved by the FAA. Like, and like I said, our air service manager does attend several industry networking events where he has specific meetings with different airlines. He does significant amount of research, so he can justify and approve an airline servicing a specific market. So he's not only looking at new airlines, he's also looking at existing carriers and expanding their service offerings through our airport. In addition, he does do headquarter, airline headquarter trips to have conversations with the different scheduling. So there's many different facets to the program that we work through and try to encourage different service to different markets. And probably most importantly is to really find what markets our regional community are interested in, and so there's also work with the different business associations in the region as well.
Great, thank you. And I just want to congratulate our airport for, for getting that very prestigious award, so congrats. I know every time I, I go, it's always a breeze to go in and out of our airport and go wherever we need to go, so congratulations and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Next, Councilmember. Councilmember Botra?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for making our seat, streets safe, city safe, and making a good progress on the Vision Zero. Most of our residents are able to adopt the safe practices with your education campaign and putting protected bike lanes and others, but some of them don't manage to respect our, our safe practices. So you're beginning to get the use of the technology to help you there. You have the red light cameras are now, violation cameras are legal, and speed cameras, AB, AB-465 will make it legal. Do you have any plans for those to be used and have the money in the budget for using those?
Thank you, Councilmember John Risto, Director of Transportation. You're referring to the red light running cameras? We did get some budget last year from council to install a pilot project of a couple of intersections of red light cameras. We have current statewide authority to do that, so we do have budget. We're selecting some locations, and we'll probably be implementing those in the fall. I think you're referring to a current statute, or it's current legislation that's going through the Assembly right now, which is Assembly Bill 645, which would allow us for, to install speed, automated speed enforcement cameras, which could, they could be placed on certain streets within the city according to the legislation. So we're waiting to see if that legislation gets out of the legislature. If it does, then we would need to have some budget to actually implement something like that. So we don't have that in the So we don't have that in the current budget right now, but we're going to see if that legislation makes it through.
That legislation is expected to make it through by the end of the year, and so obviously it will be within your next financial year, 23, 24. So if you can put in some amount of money for that one in anticipation of this, so that we don't have to wait till July 2024 to, to really be able to implement at least a pilot program of that.
Yeah, should the legislation get through, and we certainly hope so, this is looking actually more promising than the previous four times we've done this, we would work with budget offices, see if, even if there would be a mid-year or something sooner than waiting for the next budget year. But we're, we're hopeful that it gets through, and I'm sure, because of the importance of this new tool, that we would return to council and see if there would be a budget act that we could actually get something started earlier.
Yeah, I've, I've been tracking it, and several of the assembly members who are in support of it, and I've written a letter of support myself for that one, and our council has written as well. So I think it's pretty hopeful this time it will make it through. The fifth attempt might be a challenge, okay? Thank you very much.
Great, thanks, Councilman, thanks for your advocacy on the speed safety cameras, definitely an important tool, and I am more optimistic this year. Let's hope it passes. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you. Just a, a few questions, one about the airport. Judy, it seems like you, you obviously, the, the passenger numbers are increasing, we're getting back to where we were, but I'm often curious about the capacity of our airport, you know, assuming we brought in everyone we wanted to bring in, all the different airlines, a, a direct flight to Portugal, or whatever it may be. What is the, and we're going to get a new terminal, but what is the capacity that we have to bring online these various airlines?
Okay, the current capacity, we're kind of in balance right now because we did add temporary gates during the height of our growth before 2020. So our gate capacity has been estimated around 18 million. However, that's the gates, and we have several processing systems before you get to the gates, such as the security checkpoint, the landside operation, the ticket counter, and then also the baggage claim systems. And that capacity is at 14.5 million. So as we start approaching that number, our landside and prior to security will be first to be very congested. The other thing I would like to mention is that when we put in those temporary gates, those eight temporary gates, the hold room is minimal, so...
Can you say that again? The what's minimal?
The hold room to each gate is minimal, because it's what we could fit in, so they're all undersized, so we are, will also experience heavy hold room traffic.
What, to someone, obviously don't work at the airport, but I use it frequently, I guess I'm off, I often think that the bottleneck, if you will, to allowing us to really grow as much as possible, bringing all the airlines we want are really the runways, but where is, maybe that's my ignorance, but where is the bottleneck to growth, if you will? Is it just the number of terminals? Is it, is it the capacity on the front end, say, all the, you know, security points?
Thank you for that question. As far as the runways, we have substantial capacity. And that's, we did that study with the Runway Incursion Mitigation Program back in, well, it was finally approved by the FAA in like 2001. So we have substantial capacity on the two runways, and we were able to close the small general aviation runway because we did not need it for capacity. So it's not the runways.
Okay.
And as I mentioned, it's the front-end systems and the undersized hold rooms.
Okay, so if we, if we were interested in, in bringing in more traffic, meaning more planes, more service, then at some point it would trigger the need to expand the front-end sort of operations, right, to, to allow for the flow of the passengers and such?
Right, and that would be, if our projected growth holds, it'd be within a couple years.
Okay.
So it's, it's approaching, and we're watching it. There's certain mitigation measures that we can do to mitigate, but what we'll see is a decreased level of customer service.
Right, wait times. Okay, thank you for that. And then just a question, a few questions for you. John, apologize, I didn't, I haven't asked this in a while, but hopefully you know the answer. You have these intelligent folks in the audience who know the answer, but the Branham Lane expansion that was, I know there was, it was lacking funding and such, do you, do you have a sense as to where that is?
Are you referring to Branham Lane near the park?
Yes, yes, right next to Marshall Cottle.
So we, we do have the funding to actually put the signal in that, that was there, and it'll, it'll go in, in a kind of a temporary condition, because the widening towards the park is not funded yet. So we don't have funding in our capital program for that Branham widening, however, the signal, which is an important piece of that, that, that will be implemented, and I'm trying to remember the exact timeframe of that, but probably within the next year.
Okay, all right. And the other question I have is related to, well, let me just first express a pet peeve of mine, is that our streets, that obviously we have vast number of streets, I know that they're, on any given day, any given second, there is a contractor, whether it be PG&E, whether it be some of the cable company, whatever, they're digging up our streets. And so what they do after is they, it seems to me, they, they attempt, emphasize that word, attempt to bring it back to its original condition. Oftentimes I see that that's not the case, and I'm curious how many people within your department are actually driving around, you know, making sure that they were left in the, in good condition.
Well, that's a sore, sore spot for us, especially when we're out there doing a great job of actually redoing all of our streets. What we do do, in advance every year of our paving program, we coordinate with Public Works and all the utilities, PG&E and other utilities, every year to get the schedules that they may need to do to get into a street. So we try to coordinate that so they're not coming after we do a really nice looking street.
But they do, inevitably.
There are, there are inevitable, so we do try to have at least a one-year moratorium. That may not seem like a lot, but with so many underground utilities, they could be our utilities too, sewer, water, and others. So we try to coordinate that so it doesn't happen immediately after, so at least a one-year moratorium. Sometimes there's emergencies that have to occur. So, and when, when we, we do have to have a, a utility contractor cut into our street, Public Works will permit them and, and monitor the construction, and they are supposed to make, they're supposed to return that to drivable quality. It doesn't always look like that, sometimes it just takes them...
Or feel that way.
Yeah, or feel like that, sometimes it takes them a while for that roadway to, to reach back to where we are. So it's always a problem for us with so many, so much work going on underground. We manage it pretty well, but it always comes up as an issue, so we're trying to coordinate it, but it can't be perfect, and there's always an emergency, and there's so much work going on underground, some of it our own, that has to occur.
And I don't have any more time left, I'll just end it with a statement, just, I, I just think, I don't know how many folks you have in your department that are actively going out there and looking at these. I mean, there's a lot of streets around the city, and so I would just think about whether you have enough resources to do that, because I suspect some things are falling through the cracks.
Yeah, there's a lot of work out there, a lot of utility cuts, large and small, and I think the best thing is if, if, if those utility cuts are causing a road quality issue or performance or condition, letting us know about that through our 311 pothole. We've got a great crew that responds very promptly to those kind of things. So if that, if that cut is not up to quality and the utility is not being asked, and sometimes they're long gone, but if the utility's not able to go and fix that, then we will have to fix it. But we need to know about it. We don't necessarily just drive around looking for those kind of things, so we really do need public's help to actually know where they are.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. John, to Councilmember Jimenez's point, what, if we do not believe that it is sufficiently drivable, sufficiently repaired to drivable quality, what recourse do we have?
Well, again, the, the permitting of all the utility cuts coming through Public Works, so we coordinate with them on that. So it would, would be something that we would need to know about it, and then if, and if it's still within a recent timeframe, that that utility can go back and fix that, that's the way we'd like to do it. Sometimes that's just not the case, so then we'll need to go out there and, and do the work.
And what's a reasonable timeframe?
But recourse is, if they didn't do it well enough, we can ask Public Works to go back and, and issue, you know, a fix order.
Okay, and what's a reasonable timeframe?
That's a good question. I don't, I'll have to get back to John that, I don't know, that would be something that we would have to go back to Public Works to see what their permit requires.
Yeah, I, I think it would be good to know. I mean, I think our 10 council offices are on the front lines hearing the complaints and are probably the best conduit for getting you the complaint when somebody's street's been torn up and hasn't been repaired particularly well.
We can follow up, and we'll get a timeframe that, that something like that could occur, but I'll have to talk to my team about what that timeframe looks like.
Okay, should be good to know. And then Councilmember Jimenez, one, one other thing you mentioned that I may have not properly passed off to you with redistricting, was on the Branham widening, are we still working with county parks to try to create an additional entrance at that new signal to, to Marshall Cottle?
I'm going to say yes. I think we did get to that, that my last recollection of where we were with that is that with that signal was going to allow us to have a new pedestrian and maybe into the parking lot. I think that's correct, and I'll confirm that after, at the meeting, but I believe so.
Okay, I know it's a priority for the neighborhood there. Okay, great, thank you. All right, we have three hands up, and we have 15 minutes, so if we each stick to our five, we're going to be on time. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the great work that your staff does, John. I really feel that, you know, I ask a lot of questions, and they've been really responsive, they've been responsive to my staff, so I just want to say thank you on that front. I noticed that you have several positions, but none have to do with a particular pain point that I have in my district, which is parking compliance and vehicles. So I'm just wondering if it's an issue of, not that you don't need new positions, but that you don't have your positions filled?
More that we don't have the positions filled, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we are still at a vacancy rate of maybe 17 to 20% out of, out of parking compliance, so, but we're, we are hiring, so we're doing better.
Okay.
We are, on another item that's coming to council about vehicle abatement and vehicle plight, we are looking at ways to actually augment our services out there through either current budget with some additional contract. We do have contract staff as well that we do, that assist us with parking compliance. So we have not, we're not sure if that's going to be a necessary budget add, but right now I think we're okay, it's just trying to fill those positions.
Okay, and then is there a monitoring in terms of how well we're doing on customer service and complaints coming in?
Yeah, you're going to hear a lot of that next week, on the item that's coming to council, in terms of how, what we're doing with a number of areas of vehicle plight.
Okay.
So you're going to hear quite a bit about that.
Thank you.
Customer service being a very important aspect of that.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to make a comment on the airport. I attended an event this week, which had a lot of sort of international, they are trying to bring diplomats to the area in the, in November timeframe, and I was really surprised and pleasantly surprised that the airport, San Jose Airport was represented, because there's going to be a bunch of protocols and, you know, sort of security that needs to, and they're coming through San Jose. Even though the conference is in San Francisco, they're coming here first, so I was extremely delighted. There's a lot of work that I think that the staff does that we don't recognize, but this is good business. So I just wanted to acknowledge them as well as the airport staff on good work. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Vice Mayor, keeping us on time. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. Actually, I, I just wanted to take one minute to praise two of my favorite departments. But...
I'm, I'm noticing a pattern here, Councilmember.
You know, the more you butter them up, the more work they do for the district, so... So I, but I, but I want to, first of all, just thank the Transportation Department, because, you know, the amount of, the amount of, and I'm sure this is true of all 10 council members, but the amount of requests that we ask for and help we ask for the Transportation Department is quite immense, but usually you come through at a pretty good, in a pretty good timeline, so I'm actually very impressed by the ability to juggle. I always say, well, this is incredible, all the things you're doing in my district, and all of a sudden in my head I say, wow, multiply that times 10, how do they even do that? So I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank you, because in the last, last year we had a lot of conversations about the, the tree mitigation fee budget, and I, I've seen a lot of progress happening across the city and using that money with the new contract and getting trees planted, and so I, I appreciate that and that we don't have to have a conversation this year about how we fund some of that work, because we now are doing it. And then I do see that this week, in the airport, we, we got the EIR out for the new terminal, so I know that there's some, a few years off before we might start that work, but I'm excited about the, thinking ahead about, about getting that terminal built to do the expansion, to get more holding space for passengers, but also more, a few more gates, and the thoughtfulness about how the temporary terminal was built to keep operations moving during that construction is actually, I think, a, a great lesson for everyone in how we, you know, do plan and deal with capacity while also working short-term and long-term at the same time. So just wanted to say thank you to both departments.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Condalis?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I too wanted to thank staff for the presentation, and, and I know the good work that, that our airport and DOT, Department of Transportation does. Unfortunately, since I took office, I've had, I haven't had the opportunity to utilize the airport as much as I, I did previously, but I, I look forward to seeing the airport traffic rebound and, and, and seeing the, the growth of our airport. And I'm glad Councilmember Jimenez asked a question about capacity, because that, that was a question I, I too had, but I guess my, my comments are specifically for DOT, for John, I guess, you know, as you're probably well aware, I'm, I'm very, very passionate about a road infrastructure and our, and our, our conditions of our roads, and I, I especially like the fact that our PCI, our, our conditions are improving as a city as a whole, and compared to other cities, I think the fact that we compounded Measure T with, you know, taxpayer dollar improvements or investments, I think that's helping us accelerate our PCI across the city, so just kudos to that. But a, a quick question, as, as we're going through and repaving our major streets, as well as our local streets, what kind of guarantees do we have as a city with our contractors to make sure that they're doing the work to a quality that meets our standards? And, and a little bit of reasoning behind that is, you know, I did a dumpster day a couple of weeks back in one of the neighborhoods, and, and I got, I got some concerns from the residents on the quality of the, of the, of the job, basically, and there was already cracks, and it's been less than a year that, that we repaved it, so, you know, I, I just, you know, want to hear a little bit and see, see what...
Thank you, and I think those are the streets that you had pointed out to us for us to take a look at, and we're doing that right now.
Correct.
But general answer to the question is, we have a one-year warranty period for a contractor, depending on the type of treatment, whether or not it's a full resurface, which we usually don't have as many problems, because we're really laying down new concrete, new asphalt, versus a ceiling, which is just a temporary maintenance, that's where they usually pop up. A couple of years ago, when we were embarking on this program, we had a specification that was causing us some problem. Wasn't necessarily a contractor's issue, but it was really us that we needed to change the specification that we're asking the contractor how to lay down that ceiling. So we changed that over the last two years, and I think we're finding better quality with that. So it's one of those things that it's, sometimes it's us, sometimes it's the contractor, but to answer your question, there's a one-year warranty period on those kinds of things, depending on the surface treatments.
Perfect, and, and that's, I think that's important to, to know, and, and as, you know, kind of a little bit on the, along the lines of the question about, you know, when, when our utility work happens and, you know, they, there's work that needs to be done, critical work that needs to be done on our roads, staff goes back and inspects the quality, I'm assuming, to make sure we give the green light on the project, on the resurfacing, et cetera?
Yes, that's correct. We have a full set of inspectors that are out on very large paving program, as each council member knows, through the year. We're paving 250 miles a year, so that's a lot of contractors and a lot of work being done. So the answer is yes, we've got a full inspection team that is, their, their job is to make sure that that contractor's following specifications and the quality then is resulting from that.
Awesome, thanks, John. Keep up the good work, and, and I know paving over 4,400 miles of San Jose roads is a challenge, and I appreciate the work that, that you and, as well as our, our CSA is doing, so thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Yeah, I want to echo the thanks, appreciate the presentation, all the work you're doing. Great to see airport passenger traffic rebounding, and, and awesome to see those road pavement conditions continuing to go up and to the right. So thank you guys for the work you're doing, and I think with that, you are relieved. We are on to whatever I'm sure are also Councilmember Cohen's favorite departments. We're on to environmental and utility services.
Environmental.
That's actually true. You do love environmental services. Thanks again. Thanks again. Ready when you are.
Good afternoon, Carrie Ramanow, Director of Environmental Services. Joined by Lori Mitchell, Director of Community Energy, and John Risto, Director of Department of Transportation. For the environmental and utility services, you know, we, we really, I think, provide a lot of the basic services to the city and generally people don't think about the work that we do as long as it's working well. So hopefully you haven't thought about us in a while. We provide storm sanitary sewer, garbage recycling, drinking and recycled water, wastewater management, and energy as well as supporting and leading Climate Smart. The core services are spread across many budgeted programs, as you can see. For example, in one area of wastewater management, that core service includes treatment plant operations, treatment plant engineering services, wastewater regulatory compliance and safety and laboratory services. So there's a lot of programs with a lot of details in them and all sort of building up to provide those basic core services to our city. Looking at our performance measure, overall, we're meeting our targets and our estimates. There's been a slight increase in the number of sanitary sewer overflows and we are directing additional resources to this area to address them. We had a reduction in recycled water deliveries due to water conservation measures across the region in the last year. San Jose Clean Energy is meeting its targets for renewable energy deliveries. We met trash load reduction targets set in the previous municipal regional stormwater permit. As you're, as you know, the new permit has additional requirements that we are addressing through programmatic changes. And to meet these, these requirements, the administration is recommending additional resources in the 23, 24 operating budget. Million gallons per day diverted from the bay has remained consistent and we are still struggling to cope with the increased solid waste disposal as a result of the pandemic and increased recyclable contamination. And we are proposing directing additional resources to waste diversion from landfills and reducing contamination in this next budget as well. Overall, the CSA budget is proposing a 19.2% increase. EST's budget is remaining relatively flat, while transportation sees a 19% increase and community energy sees a 45% increase. Overall, we're also adding 20 positions over the three departments for a total FTE of 804. 591 of those are in EST, which is why they nominated me to speak. It should be noted that these figures don't reflect DOT's total budget, as you already heard, they are in addition, in another CSA as well. The environment and utility services is highly complex and provides numerous services to the community. So some of the services we provide are maintaining 2,000 miles of sanitary sewer mains, trading 90 million gallons a day of wastewater from 1.4 million residents and 17,000 businesses across the South Bay, delivering potable water service to 27,000 customers in San Jose, delivering recycled water to San Jose, Santa Clara, and Milpitas, managing over 90,000 tons of recyclables annually, serving over 230,000 customers for solid waste, 230,000 sanitary sewer and storm customers and 27,000 of municipal water, as I said. There's a, there's a lot going on in our world and faced with those ever-changing regulations in storm and sanitary sewer collection, wastewater facility discharge, potable and recycled water, and community energy, some of those changes to regulations will have significant operational impacts across the city. And in particular, we need to invest in our storm and sanitary infrastructure needs totaling over 500 million and looking at current funding sources to augment our needs. As, as you know, the additional funding, the current funding sources are inadequate to manage our storm system. And my apologies for that last dash, it should say PFAS, not CFAS. CFAS is a public works, work group, polyfluoroalkyl substances. And then EST continues our robust outreach and marketing for all utility services, especially to increase landfill diversion and reduce contamination. Climate Smart is accelerating our efforts as well. And San Jose Clean Energy continues to deliver renewable energy to 350,000 customers with $3 billion power supply portfolio with ever, every changing complex regulations. An overview of some of our proposals, ongoing staffing additions in community energy, continued investment in maintenance of the South Bay water recycling distribution system, continued Climate Smart implementation funding, staffing, planning, and coordinating the storm and sanitary sewer infrastructure investment needs, consultant support for professional and legal services for the development of biosolids management strategy, including a public-private partnership biosolids facility at the regional wastewater facility and sanitary sewer maintenance vehicle replacements. We continue to invest in sanitary sewer collection and treatment infrastructure and staffing, but again, additional investment is needed now and in the coming years. Climate Smart San Jose will continue to lead the city towards a more sustainable future. San Jose Clean Energy continues to provide the community with clean energy service options at competitive rates and local programs that reduce greenhouse gas emissions and promote equity. And meeting the demanding regulatory requirements for stormwater and sanitary sewer systems will require increased investment and citywide collaboration in the near future. And with that, we're available for questions.
Okay, I think we're going to go to Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, just one question, Carrie, thank you for the information. Can you, can you give us an update as to where the negotiations or discussions are with Valley Water related to recycled water and some of that work? I haven't been following that as closely and I know they recently sent a letter and curious sort of where that is.
We're continuing, as we brought forward an MOU and a letter of intent, we're continuing to move forward with those conversations. You know, it's the details, but as we work with Valley Water, they're still moving forward with the Palo Alto program. And so, so they're learning what they need to learn in that, in that effort. And so we're moving at a pace that we're both comfortable with and, and continuing to, to learn. But, you know, they, they don't want to do both at the same time, but they would like to kind of quickly move on to San Jose. And so, as you know, the biggest issue is, is dealing with some of the waste material.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the last, not that, not the waste material comment, the one that preceded that. Because I was going to ask you if you think that they, they have, they share the same sentiment that we're moving as quickly as they want to move. I, because I get the sense that we're not.
Oh.
But they.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we're all in agreement that we're moving at a pace that is going to meet, meet the objectives in the right timeline.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. I guess I have to say that, anyway, I love the, I love the EST department, as you know. Just a couple, just a couple of questions, actually, one on this, on this metrics chart. There's, I always am curious when it says percent waste diverted from landfill. We've had conversations before about how we know, where we get this data. Can you describe that a little bit? I think this is self-reported by our haulers, is that how that works?
So, yes, so our haulers have contractual obligations to report and so they not only report to us, they also report to the state. And so, so that's, we get the data directly from them.
Okay, so they're, they're telling us that they have customers that are taking the recyclable material and we don't actually, because we don't actually know where it's going, but we know that they, that they have data that says it's not going in the landfill.
Yes, so they are marketing the material, the program materials that have markets. They are, they are getting someone to take it or getting paid for someone to take it.
Because we talk a lot about the contamination and how bad it was, but yet the number in residential says it's, you know, in the 75 to 80% not, that's diverted from landfill. So I'm trying to reconcile those numbers a little bit.
Valerie maybe can add a little bit of context to it, but a lot of, a pretty significant portion of our solid waste is the loose in the street. And so that, that definitely helps us, but.
Valerie, add a little bit of more detail to that, please.
Hi, good morning, Valerie Osmond, Deputy Director, Integrated Waste Management. So we do look at diversion over the course of the year and take the reports from our various haulers on how much they're able to divert from the landfill, how much is going to the landfill. When we do the contamination studies, we are looking at specific routes. We're picking samples from those routes and we're picking through items piece by piece and determining whether it's a contaminated or non-recyclable or non-programmed material item or if it is recyclable item. So it's at a much finer detail and kind of that glimpse in time. And so that's the, the data that we're getting back on those last two recycling curbside audits that we did in 2020 and in 2022. So at that much finer kind of microscopic detail, we're seeing the contamination rate very high for the, the city as a whole. So it doesn't really look at that, the whole year in volumes of tons that come into the haulers.
Does this kind of tell us that that contamination, while it's strictly is contamination, isn't having as much effect on the ability of the haulers to divert as we think it might?
Well, let's see.
Or it's a question for a comeback later, if you can think about it. I don't know if you know the answer.
Yeah, I think it is, it's, it's complicated and it's.
Yeah, I just, I just would like to understand that better at some point because it's a weird, we talk a lot about these two different things and now it's not clear to me from this data what we really should be talking about. If that's, you know, makes sense.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you, and I know Valerie, you and I love talking trash, so.
Yes, thank you.
I guess that joke will never get old, I don't know. Back to, back to follow up on Councilmember Jimenez's, Jimenez's question about the wastewater, about the purification. I'll just say, I think that from my conversations with Valley Water this year, I think we're kind of feeling like we're in a better place and that we were going to get there. There's a lot of, seems like there's a lot of demand for some of the land around the wastewater treatment plant. And I had a meeting yesterday. I want to make sure that as we have that discussion, especially with, with the Cal ISO project that's coming in around there, that we are, and then the projects encroaching on the south, some of the development that will happen in the south of the wastewater treatment plant lands, that we are sure that we're reserving and holding enough land for what, for the, for a stretch goal of capacity for the purification in that area.
So thank you. We, when we adopted the Plant Master Plan, we set aside the land that Valley Water requested to expand their purification facility and we've left that demarcated as not available for other use. So if they told us they didn't need it, we would, we would consider other options. But for now, it, it is, is not available to anyone else. However, there's also not more land available for them without encroaching on the land set aside for economic development. Because of the way that we have expanded our de-watering and other plant operational needs, there's not additional land for them without moving into economic development lands, which I think has some EIR impacts. Valley Water hasn't indicated to us that they have a draft plan. So they don't, they haven't scoped out a facility, so I, I don't think anyone really knows how much land they would need. I know they, they, everyone always wants more, but, but we do have a footprint available for them when they're ready. I also believe we're waiting for direct potable reuse regulations to pass because that makes the sort of ease of the facility, it makes it much easier, not necessarily to construct and operate, but you don't have to build a pipeline to Los Gatos. And so when, when DPR is approved, which is expected in the next year or two, I think that will start to pick up the pace.
Wouldn't we also, would we also be able to expand up into the, to the decommissioned de-watering location or not?
Not at this time, so it will take us six to eight years to completely be out of that space once de-watering starts. Because then each, it takes four years for each lagoon to, to work its way through to completion. And we, as, as de-watering gets up and running, I want to make sure it actually works. And then, as you know, we have plans to build a fertilizer facility and a fat, oil, and grease receiving station. And so we need to make sure there's enough space for trucks to turn around and, and for those facilities to be designed. So in, in the next five years, we should have more clarity on the footprint that those particular facilities will need. And why the fertilizer facility is so important to us is, recall, there will be 20 to 25 truckloads going to the Central Valley or farther every single day of the year. And so when we build that fertilizer facility, that won't happen anymore.
Yeah, no, I just wanted us to think, first of all, we're going to phase some of this purification potentially. It might not all be, we might do some capacity and then in the future do more. And there's also talk with CPUC, I mean with SFPUC about a partnership there. So I want to be just thoughtful about making sure we have the space. You know, I have stretch goals that maybe the city doesn't even have yet, that we ought to be recycling 90% of the, purifying 90% of the water that's coming through the plant. And if that's true, I'm not sure Valley Water has reserved enough space for their purification, so.
So we also have plans to expand, significantly expand South Bay water recycling, which would impact the availability of water for purification. But South Bay water recycling can be expanded much more quickly and much more cost-effectively. And, and so we think that makes a lot of sense, but additionally, the brine disposal is, is going to be challenging. But lastly, if we were to move into a DPR facility, there would be significant controls required on the businesses in our entire service area because you would be producing drinking water. And we haven't assessed the economic viability of that, but, but that is certainly something if you move from, from IPR to DPR, that, that is a game changer. And so, so we need a little more time to evaluate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I don't have any other hands, so I'll go ahead and ask my question. I think that with both Councilmember Jimenez and Councilmember Cohen, I too, you know, sort of wonder when it's going to happen with Valley Water. I am delighted that we're in a better place. My suggestion is to bring back a timeline of some sort to at least give us an understanding of how the pace is going. Because, you know, I think that while they're doing their work with Palo Alto, I think the preference would have been with us. So I think that if we could, you know, have an idea of when that's going to come back to us, that would be great. I don't need to know now, but.
Vice Mayor Jeff can, can give you a quick update on a timeline if you're interested or we can come back there.
Yes, that's fine, that's fine.
Good morning, Jeff Proventano, I'm a Deputy Director, Environmental Services Department. We're working now, we have a really close collaboration now with our City Manager's Office and some of the upper management there at Valley Water, and we are progressing on discussions. Timeline though is very, very specific. Valley Water just applied for a feasibility grant, study grant with the Bureau of Reclamation. We, as the City of San Jose and the City of Santa Clara, supported that, that application and our commitment to work with them on a feasibility study. They're thinking about two years to get that study done and we'll work with them as they go through it. Hopefully that feasibility study will answer all the questions that we know that need to get addressed. So at the end of that two-year time period with that study, and that'll really kind of shape up what a project would look like. Direct potable reuse is what we together are looking at versus an indirect, which is again, I think Carrie mentioned the regulations aren't out there yet. So once those are finalized, that'll kind of feed into that feasibility study over the next two years of, of work that we'll be doing with them.
Great, thank you so much, thank you for the information. The other thing I was wondering, John, is it's my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, that the storm sewers are sized to a 10-year flood capacity. And during the drought, you know, I mean, we didn't have to worry about it as much. But, you know, as we start thinking about, oh, well, you know, we're going to continue to grow and all of that and, you know, climate change and all of the things that come with that, I'm wondering, do we have to worry about that? And I, and I, and I bring it up simply because this year's rains were so intense. Not that it's going to happen, not that it's going to be predicted, but of course, when you don't plan, it happens.
Thank you, Councilmember John Risto, Director of Transportation. And you're entering into an area that I'm going to have to confer with our Public Works Department. They actually are the ones that actually help us with sizing the correct size and drainage areas for storm systems. So what I will do is get with Matt and we can answer that question generically and generally for you as well as the rest of the council.
Right, that's fine, that's fine, that's fine, that's. I know some of us are more interested in the more details of that, so. Okay, I don't have any more hands. We'll go on to the next team.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. You all were even more efficient.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. You all were even more efficient without me. Good job. So we're on to Strategic Support and Appointees.
Okay, thank you. My name is Rick Bruno. I'm the Director of Finance. I'm here to present the Strategic Support CSA. I'm joined here by Jennifer Shembry, Director of HR, Jim Bersig, the Assistant Director of IT, and Matt Loush, the Acting Director of Public Works. Since Wednesday, you've heard a lot about the budget plans for the city's most vulnerable, visible services. Today, I'll pull back the curtains on the core services and programs of the Strategic Support CSA. And there, there have been a lot of talk from council members about their favorite CSAs. So that I'm hoping by the end of this presentation, we can convince you why the Strategic Support CSA should be in that conversation.
Oh, definitely.
So our departments that make up the Strategic Support CSA are Finance, IT, HR, and Public Works. Within the Finance Department, we have core services of debt and treasury management, disbursements, financial reporting, purchasing and risk, and revenue management. IT has business solutions, San Jose 311, technology, infrastructure, and operations. Our HR group handles the benefits, recruiting, employment, health and safety, and workforce development. And our Public Works team is split between the CSA and others, where they have responsibility for facilities management, fleet and equipment services, planning, designing, and constructing, constructing public facilities and infrastructure. On the next slide, these are various programs and a sample of programs within our core services. Won't go into all the details, but a lot of responsibilities with these back office activities that I just shared. In terms of our performance measured dashboard, starting at the top left, our city bond rating has remained very high. And in fiscal year 2122, we received an upgrade from Fitch and that is a triple A rating on our bonds. That's the highest level that we could have. So some improvement there. We're going to look to maintain that into the future. That reduces the cost of issuance of bonds and is a high focus for our department. Moving across the top row, the percentage of positions filled in terms of the total positions budgeted. We've maintained around a 10% to 14% range. Of course, in this labor market, filling positions has been a focus of ours. Has been a challenge. And we have some investments in this budget in terms of the strategies we're going to employ to try to, try to reduce that vacancy number. The next, the third and top right is the percentage of the non-management employee performance appraisals that were completed on schedule. This year, there's been a great focus for the City Manager's Office and the Department and leadership to improve and to exceed this, this target. So we're trending above 90% and we look to close out the year at that amount. In terms of the bottom left, we show the percentage of IT project success rate. So we've been hovering right around our goal of 80%. In the middle, we have a percentage of equipment that is available for use when needed. And this is our Public Works fleet team. So both the general fleet and the emergency vehicles, maintaining a very high percentage of available for use. And the last dashboard and graph on the bottom right is our percentage of facilities with conditions assessed, assessment rating of good or better. You'll note that they've been between 80 and 85% satisfaction there. I'll note that in fiscal year 2021, with many of the facilities closed due to COVID during that period, there wasn't a survey in that year. So that's why there is not a, a percentage represented. So high-level budget summary for our CSA. The Finance Department is flat year over year. From last year's adopted budget to this year's proposed budget with approximately $82 million. I'll note that this includes debt service payments and special and capital funds. Our HR department has increases that reflect investments in recruiting, retention, and workforce development strategies. Moving from an adopted budget of approximately $119 million to $126 million. The HR, this number also includes the city's benefit fund. So that, that is, that's why the number is larger than, than what Jennifer has on her team. The IT is realizing a slight decrease, which reflects the removal of one-time funding. And Public Works is stable with slight increases in staffing for Measure T operations and maintenance and fleet communication installers. The bottom line CSA budget growth from the last year's adopted budget to this year's proposed budget is 1.9%. And that's from $411 million to $419 million. Our service delivery environment is one where finance is operating in a world with increased regulations and a flow of new accounting provisions to comply with. HR is tasked with attracting, growing, and retaining a diverse workforce in a tight labor market. IT is challenged and charged with upgrading and maintaining the technology infrastructure, strengthening our cybersecurity position, and advancing our customer service through San Jose 311 and Customer Contact Center. And Public Works is responsible for maintaining aging city facilities, equipment, and vehicles. So in terms of the budget actions and proposals that we put forward, I'll summarize the key ones here, starting at the top. Windows 11 update, upgrade to the software as well as equipment and resources. So this action includes funding to replace and upgrade 65% of all devices this year with additional funding needed for next year that will mitigate the city's equipment, that will migrate the city's equipment to new devices before the Windows sunset of support in 2025. The next item for Finance is the Disaster Recovery and Grants Management Staffing. So this continues funding for a dedicated team to track and document expenditures to maximize cost recovery, ensure compliance reporting, and continued audit support. The Recruitment Centralization Effort is an action that continues a pilot program that centralizes recruitment for departments with high vacancy rates. The next item, Development Staffing and Pipeline. This is an additional investment in recruiting strategies to develop partnerships and build pipelines for the Measure T operations and maintenance staff. This is to add staffing to support Measure T-funded city facilities, including the fire station, fire training center, and the EOC. The Enterprise Resource Planning Resources, this is for two resources, one in IT and one in Finance. And this is to begin the planning activities to implement a replacement of the city's ERP systems. IT is also leading a homeless management system implementation. And this is to address blight and outreach work, workloads related to homeless encampment service requests. And then finally, the fleet maintenance staffing. This funds two positions in the Fleet Management Division to focus on upgrading and repairing communication equipment in police, fire, and other department vehicles. So in summary, the objective of our CSA is to manage the city's assets. That is the finances, the employees, the technology, and the city-owned facilities, equipment, and vehicles. With that, we'll take any questions.
Great. Thank you. Check the council list here. We'll start with Councilmember Foley.
Not a question, just a statement. As my mother would say, I love all of my children equally. So I love all of our departments equally. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
I think by the time we get to the end, the same is going to be true for Councilmember Cohen. I think, I think they're all favorites. Thank you all for the presentation. I'm not, oh, we are seeing hands now. Great. Okay. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. So I guess I'm, I agree with Councilmember Foley. I love you all. I, I'm sort of stuck on this storm sewer thing because I, I know that, you know, we've gone through the N D P S permitting and all of that. And as some of the bio-waste and things, and I know that that's another CSA that's dealing with it. But it sort of all goes to the bay. So I'm, I'm sort of thinking about all of the, the flow of the water. And so I was just, maybe my, I'm hoping my information is wrong, but I just wanted to know, storm sewers are designed at a 10-year capacity of flow. And, you know, this last year, we, I mean, it was unusual that we had so much rain. But I'm just wondering, with everything that's happening, do we have to be concerned about that or prepare anything for that?
Thanks for the question. And sorry, I didn't jump up fast enough to answer the question in the last round. Matt Loush, Acting Public Works Director. There's, we have a master plan team for both sanitary system and the storm system. And so we are completing and working on right now a storm master plan for the entire system. We'll have better information once that's complete and we'll be able to report out. We are studying regularly. And so anytime there's a new development or new work going on, our team is driving that study of, do we have a conveyance system of storm water and sewer water, conveyance systems to wherever they end up. And so sometimes, and what are the impacts to different conveyance systems? We have a team that models that. And we partner with Valley Water, who is the one who regulates the waterways, which is different. We bring the things to the waterways. And so we do study it regularly. We have a master planning team that focuses on this and is modeling the storm sewer system regularly.
I'd be interested in, in getting more information on that.
We'd be very happy to share one.
Yeah, so we can, we can do that offline. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Great. Thanks, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Batra.
Unlike my colleague, Councilmember David Cohen, I do love all my departments here, love equally and sometimes a little better. I do have a question about the IT. In IT work, we have identified that there is some kind of a warm handoff of things may happen between the request on 311 coming to City of San Jose to the county because the work really belongs in the county. So we probably have budgeted in our work to be able to do that kind of work. Have we approached the county to be reciprocating and being, getting ready to be able to work with us? Because whatever we do is going to require some work on their side. And have they also budgeted this work? Because we can lead it, but they have to come along and make it work for us.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Jim Bersig, Assistant CIO Information Technology. I have not personally reached out to the county. However, yes, Khalid Tofak, our Chief Information Officer, is in touch with the CIO with the county, has talked specifically about the partnering with the county on SJ311-related activities. And I believe he's in discussions with them to potentially cost share it as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so probably more to come on that.
So, so we will, assuming we can make progress, we will have a willing partner to be able to do the work?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you. Matt, just a question. I know that under Public Works, fleet, maintenance, and operations falls under that. So this is going to be a very specific question. You may or may not know the answer. But Public Works is, manages the, the, the fleet and everything related to the maintenance and such in all departments, right? Whether it be fire engines, whether it be a truck that's used in parks and rec, things of that nature. Is that?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
We procure, build, and maintain them. Yes.
Okay. What is, what is, can you help me understand the, the process by which, say, we were retiring a fire engine and what we do with it? Do we go sell it, you know, on a particular market or something?
Any city asset, regardless if it's a fire truck or a desk, we put them out to auction through auction, through an auction process. And so there's public auctions in which anytime any of our vehicles, fire trucks or otherwise, we have an auction process by which they are procured out after that.
And is that built into like a policy or a city policy or like?
I would assume that's yes. I couldn't quote for you which one it is exactly. But yes, we have to, yes.
The reason I ask is, you know, I'm on the Board of Directors of Sister Cities International. I've heard time and again, and you'll see where I'm going with this. Starting way out here, I'm going to bring it, I'm going to bring it home. But I've had discussions with different city officials in different parts of the country. And some of them have expressed as an example that they've donated some of their fire trucks or police vehicles to, to some of the countries or cities that they have sister city relationships with, say, Mexico, say Vietnam, things of that nature. And so I'm curious if we were interested in doing something similar to that?
There is a whole donation process as well. We have to declare it. We have public website, website on it. There is a policy about donations as well.
Okay, all right. Okay, very good. And then the other question I have, because I think it still falls under you, is my understanding, when I took office, for example, we clear out our offices. There were a bunch of old furniture in there. It goes to a particular warehouse. Does that sound familiar?
Yes.
There's a warehouse that stores all the sort of lost, the sort of island of misfit furniture where everything gets sent. And so that surplus warehouse just contains all the surplus related to furniture and things, or what else does it contain? I've never been out there, but I.
We can take you on a tour if you so desire. It's a, it's a very standard warehouse with cages and things. Things are stored there generally, but then there is a furniture portion of it that has some surplus furniture goods. Things that still have value that still are, could be in use. We will hang on to them there and then we can bring them to use for other places.
And what is the process for which, in which we dispose of those items? But they've been sitting there 10 years and we try to, I mean, what is?
It would be a similar thing. If they're damaged and no longer good, we would dispose of them normally. Otherwise, we would auction them off as well.
All right. Thank you. And I asked that question just being that there's many people in the San Jose community that quite frankly, go without a lot of these things that are just sitting around in the city warehouse and it's just working out in my mind just the possibility.
Shrink your expectations in terms of the quality and volume of what's there. It's certainly not a very robust warehouse with lots of things. It's pretty small in terms of furniture in particular.
Hence the tour. We need to do the tour. So, okay. Thank you so much for that. I appreciate it.
Awesome. Great questions. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. You know, your, your departments are the ones that if everything's going well, we don't often think about. But I appreciate all the work that you do because you keep the city operating. I have just one question. Is this, this section is supposed to include discussion on the appointees budget as well, or is there a separate discussion on those?
Councilmember, we'll have the discussion on the appointees right after this.
Oh, so that'll be, okay. Then I don't have a question for this group. Thank you. But, but thank you for the detailed presentation and all of the, all of your work.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Dawn?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. And I believe we're all in the same boat, so we should love each other always around. But anyway, I just got a quick question for you, Matt, and on the storm drain. You know, as a retired first responder, I've gone out to multiple calls where residents are still not aware that they shouldn't be dumping oil or coolant from their vehicle down the storm drain. Is there a process where you can reach out to our citizen to, to make sure that they are aware it is illegal? And then is, there's a different way of process of, has, remove their hazardous ways through the city?
So thanks for the question, Councilmember. We don't, so in public, just, I'm not trying to defray it, but I'll get to the right place on this. Is Public Works, we design and build the storm system. It is maintained and cleaned through our Department of Transportation. When illegal dumping or things being spilled into the waterways, that would be in our Environmental Services Department. And so there are different checks and balances on that and we coordinate together on those. ESD has regular campaigns around, don't spill things in and clearing things out. And there, I think each catchment basin has things of this goes to the bay and things like that. So just be wary. I do believe they have campaigns as well, but I'd have to connect with ESD on which, the contamination bit particularly.
Thank you and keep up the good work.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. Just a final question from me. Obviously vacancies have been a huge issue. We need to staff up. That was referenced in the presentation. Jennifer, I wonder if you could just say a little bit about how we compare with other agencies? Jennifer, I wonder if you could just say a little bit about how we compare with other agencies and some of the bets we're making this year to fill those vacancies?
Thank you. Jennifer Schembry, Director of Human Resources and Employee Relations. We're definitely not alone in our vacancy issues. I speak regularly with other HR directors around the area, Bay Area, and also larger agencies similar to us, like a San Diego and those sorts of things. We actually fare better than I could say at most other agencies that I've seen. You know, we have other agencies similar to us that are 17% vacancy rates right now. As of March, we stand at 14. We're about to run April. I do hope April's a little bit better than that, given the hiring that I've seen that we've been doing. And I think that just a lot of the work and the things that are in this proposed budget will get us to a better place as well.
Okay, great. Appreciate that. Any other questions? Okay, so this was our strategic support departments. We're now going to move to appointees. Thank you very much. We already, under Public Safety, had the independent police auditor in. So what we're going to do now, we don't have a presentation, but just for my colleagues, we have an opportunity here to ask questions of the city manager, city attorney, city clerk, city auditor, and the Office of Retirement Services. So this is open-ended. I believe they're all here, yes. And so if you have questions on any of those council-level appointees, put up your hands, and we will start with Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I guess I wanted to get a better understanding from the clerk in terms of, as we're looking at our budgets, one of the things that I saw is that, you know, kind of like when you save water, when the rates go up, right? They use what you've been saving, and then all of a sudden, you know, your efforts to, you know, be a little bit more wise on saving water, you get penalized. Well, I kind of feel that way about some of the budget numbers for our offices in that if you've been good about, you know, watching your budgets, not spending, you know, everything, you will get less the following year. So I'm just wondering, you know, in terms of how that is. And maybe I'm misunderstanding the numbers that I saw, but I just wanted clarification on that.
Jim, could you explain how the adopted to the base budget, to the proposed budget works, please?
Yes, yes, for sure. Just to quickly answer the question. So any savings in a councilmember's office budget is available to be rebudgeted into the following year. So that savings can accrue to the following year. So the budget that is assembled for the mayor and city council offices is based on a combination of the individual compensation cost for a specified number of employees, their salary and their benefits, as well as an equal amount for each council district for a flexibly use for staffing and any non-personal and equipment costs. Any of those that are unspent at the end of the year are typically then rebudgeted into the following year. So one of the BDs that is often released by a council office is to rebudget savings from the current year to the following year. And the clerk's office will help you with that as the time gets closer. The proposed budget, like section, looks a little bit weird too because of the different elections that happened this year. We split the budget off, the district funding, into sort of two different appropriations, one for each half of the year. So anything that is remaining unspent in that first half gets rolled into the second budget, so that all your budget remains whole.
So this is something that comes from you, Jim, and not from Tony? I mean, I don't know. This is my first time, so I don't know.
Are you asking about the clerk's budget or budgeting in general?
No, the sort of how the assumptions are made because, in terms of the budget numbers. Because what I'm seeing is that if you're an office that used up all of your budget, then the following year you get more budget, right? Or it comes up. Whereas if you had dollars that roll over, then you don't get as much. So I...
And Vice Mayor, to clarify, are you saying for the council offices?
Yes.
I see. Okay, so the question's about the council office budgets?
Yeah, not for the clerk's budget.
Okay, so that would be Jim.
Oh, that would be Jim.
And then I think the clerk's role is to help you estimate what your remaining balance in any given year. So I know they work very hard to do that.
And that's where I saw the differences. If you're an office that perhaps, you know, had different people coming in and out, you know, there was salary savings, and then the following year, it's assumed that, oh, well, you have these salary savings, you know, you're not going to need it, so you get less. So...
No, I think part of your budget, everybody gets the same pot for the city councils. It's the same for everybody. But there are differences in like the benefits packages based on the employee that might be what you're seeing. I'm not positive. But you all get the same amount. Some people have more because they've maybe rebudgeted multiple years. So we had one council member who saved a lot every year, and his... It rolled over and rolled over and rolled over. And so it looks like he was getting so much more than everybody else. But it's just, it was his savings that was rolling over every year. So you might be seeing that, but we can sit down with you and my staff and kind of go over all of that with you. But you all receive the same base.
Base all across? Okay. All right. I didn't understand that, but thank you.
Great. Thanks for the question. Councilwoman Cohen?
Yeah, now's my chance to ask the question I had. On the page 328, under City Council, I'm just was curious about the big spike in '22, '23 on the city council budget. I mean, we're going, looks like this year's budget's, you know, similar to what we've budgeted in past years. But what was, what happened in '22, '23 that caused that $3 million bump?
I think those are the rebudgets that we're talking about. So the adopted budget includes the amount that was rebudgeted from the prior fiscal year. So the proposed budget, and that's sort of the tricky thing a little bit about some of the numbers on the proposed budget column in the process that we're at now, because it only includes any new funding. It doesn't include any carryover funding yet. So I suspect that when you see the adopted budget published in early fall, that those numbers will look pretty similar between the adopted '22, '23 and the adopted '23, '24.
Thanks for the explanation. So when we write our rebudgeting memos, then those numbers get added to the actual adopted budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember. Any other questions for any of the council appointees? Councilmember Foley?
I just want to clarify something regarding the rebudgeting memo and to notify all of the new councilmembers in particular that if you have any unspent cash in your bank, let me put it that way, you write a memo to roll it over to the next year. So every year I've had this huge balance because I guess I was, I don't know, didn't have enough staff or something. And so I'm rolling over this huge amount, and it looks like I'm getting more, but it's not. I'm taking it from previous years and just adding it to the budget that I get. But you have to do that in the budget session and make sure that that money is rolled over to you.
And my office helps you with that.
Yeah.
I just did come up with one more question.
Thanks for that clarification. Wow, we just had a bunch of hands go up. Is it tied to the same issue? Okay, I'll come back around to you then. Yeah, I'll come back to you. Councilmember Candelaus?
Yeah, excuse me. My question is pertaining to our city clerk. And for the following year, it's my understanding that we're budgeting more money for our translation services. And are we also looking at improvements and/or efficiencies with, you know, now that we have a hybrid approach to our meetings, to how to better incorporate and make it a little bit more seamless? Because, you know, I feel like, you know, I think there's an opportunity for improvement with regards to, you know, how diverse our city is. And I'm curious to hear your thoughts on that.
Yes. I'm working with the Office of Racial Equity as well. They've introduced me to some products that we're scheduling a demo. We've already met with the company and had like the presentation, but we want to bring them into the chambers to see how it integrates. I don't want to name the company because I don't know if that changes anything, like contract-wise. But they have, it's an app that will translate into, I think it's like 20 different languages. And it's like basically live captioning and interpreting in their language, whatever language they choose, which, so it's really exciting, and it's fairly inexpensive for the amount of languages we have. And that's useful for both online and in person, so we're looking at that. This particular is for like traditional, having in-person interpreters for two of the major languages. Of course, people can always request an additional one for a meeting. We had a request for Kamar recently, and so we brought in interpreters for that. So we can still take special requests, but with this particular one, it's for Spanish and Vietnamese, in-person and virtual for every meeting, including headsets. So that's an extra cost as well. We'll need to buy headsets and manage that. But yes, we are looking at additional... I'm very excited by this app with the captioning. Office of Racial Equity was really happy with it because I'm going to them because they're the subject matter experts on what the community needs and wants. So hopefully we'll have all of that maybe by August, but I'm not positive.
Fantastic. Thank you. I guess I'm happy to see that we're moving in the right direction on that, you know, keeping in mind how diverse and how, you know, in touch our community is and civic engagement, and anything we can do to encourage it and facilitate it, more importantly. I'm all for it. Thank you, Tony.
Thanks, Councilmember. Councilmember Batra?
One of clarification, you said we write the budget for requesting a rebudget item. But we don't know exactly how much the saving is. Do we just write a generic memo saying...
My office is going to help you with it. You don't need to worry about it. We'll help you.
Okay, all right. Okay, we just sign it, whatever you say, okay?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, thank you very much.
We want to make it super easy for you guys.
Okay, we'll sign it.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cohen?
Yeah, just a question. I think these might be for clerk's office. Where do we see in the budget the money set aside for this, for election year, for the cost of elections?
That I'd need to open up. That is a separate... I think it's a separate number.
Yeah. Councilmember Cohen, that's in the citywide expenses section of the budget document.
Okay.
And we can give you the number. It's 3.8 million for '23, '24.
For, that's for the primary because '24, '25 will have the general election in it. Okay.
Yeah, we have an election every fiscal year because of the way the elections are split.
Oh, I guess that's true. There is one every year. So it probably doesn't change very much. I keep thinking it's...
I know.
Because of the... Oh, yeah, okay. Thank you. The other question is, there was an expense, was it the current fiscal year? We had an expense because we're upgrading this, these systems, and that's, was... I mean, we're supposed to be upgrading our council meeting computers and systems.
Do you mean the citywide expenses?
That's under citywide as well.
Well, the council chambers comes out of Public Works.
Public Works Department, okay. Okay. And that, since it's, though it is your department, I think your, or Public Works is doing the work, right? But I was going to ask about the timing. Is that coming in June, like we talked about?
That is not my department. It is Public Works. But yeah, it's supposed to be. I mean, I know that they've asked me to clear some dates in May, that we have reservations in the wings to do work.
Okay.
But yeah, that's not me.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor. Councilman Jimenez?
Yeah, just on that note, since Public Works is in charge of these chambers and such, I'm curious when we're going to fix this thing in the middle. It used to rotate, and I think oftentimes we, I know it's, we have more important things to talk about, but oftentimes we have the mic up there and it just creates awkward space. And so I'm curious if this is ever going to turn and rotate as it used to.
Yeah, happy to answer that. Lee Wilcox, Assistant City Manager. That is one of the pieces and upgrades that will happen in this room after Public Works is done making the modifications in the wing so that we can go back and start having the committees in the wing in the new fiscal year. So that'll be work that'll be done possibly this year, but there's a number of improvements that'll happen in this room over the next three years.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Dawn?
I just want to make a quick statement to the city clerk. You guys are doing an incredible job keeping us in the boundary and keeping us out of trouble, and I just want to say thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, stay out of trouble. Okay. Not seeing any other hands. Thank you to all of our council appointees and all of the department heads who presented today. We are on to public comment.
Linda?
Hi, this is Linda Hutchins Knowles. Good morning, Mayor Mahan, Vice Mayor Kamai, and councilmembers. I'm a San Jose resident and co-founder of Mothers Out Front Silicon Valley. And on behalf of our over 2,000 supporters, I ask you to increase funding for the Environmental Services Department so they can accelerate their work to achieve our carbon-neutral goals by 2030. I understand you're being asked to focus on the basics, but what's more basic than livable climate? With tolerable heat, clean air, and adequate water, a sustainable environment is indispensable to our health, safety, economy, and our children's future. If San Jose is going to achieve our climate goals in an equitable way, we need to put our money where our climate is. Please ensure that ESD staff have the resources they need to implement the many strands of the Climate Smart Plan. With more staff capacity, ESD will be better positioned to submit strong bids for major grants that are available from the federal and state levels to support our climate goals. These grant opportunities are very competitive, and San Jose needs to be prepared to seize each opportunity. Consider additional funding to be an investment that will likely pay off in generous grants, bringing us more funding. At last week's council meeting, several members of the public and several of you raised questions about whether it's wise to merge the Elite Forum Climate Advisory Commission with the current Clean Energy Community Advisory Commission. And it seems the decision to combine the two bodies was driven largely by limited staff capacity. Rather than being constrained by limited staff capacity, you have the power to increase staff capacity with more funding and thus have more informed community input into these areas. To conclude, the climate crisis is accelerating. With increased wildfires, floods, and heat waves, we simply cannot afford to wait until we solve other pressing problems to deal with the climate. Please vote for a healthy environment today and a livable climate tomorrow and allocate more funding for ESD on behalf of our children. Thank you.
Paul Soto?
Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. Last night at the housing development meeting, I couldn't believe how many lies and lies after lie after lie was continually told by the city staff. The housing voted down unanimously, and I, whoever hired Opie Sketch... Man, thank you, thank you, thank you for placing her on back committee. Because what she said, how she said it, why she said it, and then how detailed she said it, I, as a citizen, I thank you very, very much for not only putting her there, but for her saying what she said at that meeting, because it absolutely needed to be said. The fact that our mayor wants to continually neglect his moral and ethical responsibility. I don't care about the law. The law means nothing to me. Slavery was legal. Slavery was legal, so I don't care about the law. What I care about is justice. What I care about is having a moral and ethical standard by which it governs and institutes and informs policy. That's what I care about. And the fact that this mayor wants to continually, continually debase and disrespect by putting, actually thinking that policies like this and stripping Measure E funds in order to institute whatever policies he believes should happen is going to cause death. People are going to die as a result of it, and he's going to sit there with a smile on his face. And he's going to sit there and just next, 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 and then walk around thinking he's tough with a bunch of cops behind him with guns. You know what's tough? What I do, homeboy. That's what's tough. I'm done.
Back to council.
Thank you. All right, everybody. Thanks again for the great presentation. Hope you have a wonderful afternoon.